I started removing layers. But it was, it was interesting, just in, what's that, 20 miles, having nine degree difference like that.
We're talking for the break about player placing the ball, really positive drop, because he knew it was going to fall like that. So he stays below the ball. I mean, the lower he's dropping. And physically knows that he'll stop the ball with his feet. But you also talked about, okay, if you drop the ball and it hits your foot, now you have to be dropped again, you have to be dropped again, or you know, you drop at the right time. But that would be okay in that case where if you're hitting, dropping, stop the ball from rolling into the water. And after you second drop and you place it.
Okay. Well, Bob, I think that there are kind of two variations of that. And let's take the case where player's trying to drop the ball right by the lateral water hazard margin. And he doesn't have a caddy or anybody to stop his ball from going right into five feet of water. So can he somehow drop the ball and then stop it after it rolls into the hazard but or goes in the water? Answer is yes, but he can't do that until after it crosses the hazard margin. So if he drops it so close, so if his feet are positioned inside the hazard, then that would be okay.
Whether the ball can come back out of.
Yeah, it does. So yeah, it says something like, and presuming that it's reasonable the ball would not on its own come back out of the hazard. But then another question, someone asked me, it's kind of an interesting one. Andy and Dan, everybody can think about this, is let's say a player has to go back to an area under, say, stroking distance. And let's say there are a lot of divot holes in the area, or at least one divot hole in the area that he doesn't want his ball to roll into. Would there be any breach of the rules if the player intentionally puts a foot over the divot hole when he drops the ball? Isn't that pretty good? You like that? Yeah, you know, that's kind of interesting. It's kind of an interesting question. I'm not sure, sure if we ever reached a.
Like casting your shadow.
All right. So back to 20-2C. This rule talks about when a ball must be re-dropped. And it talks about these seven situations where ball rolls into one of these situations, ball must be re-dropped. And if ball again, when re-dropped rolls into one of them, then the ball will be placed where it first struck a part of the course on that last drop. So go through them. Ball rolls into and comes to rest in a hazard. For example, what Bob just talked about, we're talking about player taking relief from the lateral water hazard, drops outside the hazard in the two club length area. Ball lands in that area, but then it rolls into the hazard, player must re-drop the ball. If the ball rolls out of a hazard, so you could have a case where, let's say, a player is taking casual water relief inside a bunker, drops in the bunker, ball lands in the bunker, but rolls out of the bunker, he must re-drop. Ball rolls onto a putting green. Say a player is taking relief from a sprinkler head right near the putting green and drops the ball in the prescribed area and the ball rolls onto the putting green, even if it's not closer to the hole, he must re-drop. Or if the ball rolls, comes rest out of bounds, say a player has is deemed as ball unplayable near a boundary and drops the ball and ball rolls out of bounds and must re-drop. Then the fifth item covers a number of situations that if the ball rolls and comes to rest in a position where there's interference by the condition from which relief was taken under 24-2B for immovable obstruction, 25-1 for an abnormal ground condition, 25-3 for long putting green or local rule, or rolls back into the pitch mark from which it was lifted under rule 25-2, the player must re-drop the ball. Six, if the ball rolls and comes to rest more than two club lengths from where it first struck a part of the course. Even if that is farther from the hole, the direction is irrelevant. If it rolls more than two club lengths, player must re-drop. And finally, if the ball rolls and comes rest near the hole than the ball's original position or estimated position. So for example, if the player's proceeding under stroking distance and he drops the ball nearly behind where he just played from, but it rolls forward of that, of where he played from, he must re-drop. The nearest point of relief or maximum available relief. And this is one point that is interesting, that when you take relief from a cart path, that when you determine your nearest point of relief and then measure one club length dropping area from there, that nearest point of relief becomes your reference point for determining whether you must re-drop the ball. It's not the original position of the ball on the cart path. It's the nearest point of relief becomes the reference point. And then last, the point where the original ball last crossed the margin of the water hazard. So taking relief from the lateral water hazard, drop the ball behind that spot within two club lengths and ball then rolls closer to the hole than that spot, the player must re-drop. Yeah, Ken?
Question, says rolls onto and comes to rest on a putting green. What if you drop the ball legally? And if strikes the putting green, it comes to rest.
All right, all right, well, that's a good question. There's nothing on this that says you must re-drop a ball if it rolls off a putting green. So let's say, for example, you have a situation where, let's take the 16th green at the River Course at Black Wolf Run, where you have the Sheboygan River very tight to the golfer's left. And let's say the hole is all the way in the back left part of the green. And the player's ball goes into the hazard on the front left part of the green. And so if he takes his two club lengths from the hazard margin, comes perpendicular out, he can get on the putting green. And what is rule 26-1C? Say, say drop the ball, doesn't say on what part of the course, just drop the ball outside the hazard. So he would, in that case, would actually drop the ball on the putting green. And if the ball lands on the putting green, and then let's say if it rolls off the putting green onto the fringe, but it doesn't roll more than two club lengths, doesn't roll closer to the hole than where the ball last crossed the hazard margin, then he would play the ball from the fringe by default. As you point out, the rule was silent on the rare case of a ball rolling off a putting green.
Does that one need to be the case if it were interfered with a obstruction? And that obstruction was near the putting.
Well, it depends. In most cases, if you're dropping on the putting green, you're dropping in a wrong place. So you have a bigger issue before you worry about where the ball rolls. But what I was saying about is when you are allowed to drop on the putting green, such as with the lateral water hazard. But if you have an immovable, if your ball lies off the putting green and you have interference in, let's say, a sprinkler head, you're not going to be able to drop on the putting green.
I have a question. Under item seven, rolls and comes to rest near the hole than its original position or estimated position, unless otherwise permitted by the rule. Could be provided.
Okay.
Unless otherwise permitted.
And item seven, the first item, when could a ball roll and come to rest near the hole than the ball's original position as otherwise permitted by the rules? An example would be a dropping zone, where let's say on a par three over water, you're going to a dropping zone. So you're starting off closer to the hole than, say, for example, the reference point for taking relief. And in some cases, you know, the dropping zone might actually be closer to a hole than where the ball lies in the water itself. So that would be an example. Now, one point with all this, keep in mind, is with item five there, is how does this apply to water hazards? That what happens if you take relief from a lateral water hazard, you drop the ball outside within two club lengths of where it last crossed the hazard margin? Ball lands there, rolls closer to the hazard, stays outside the hazard. But then to play the ball, you would be standing inside the lateral water hazard. What is the ruling in that case? Yeah, you don't have interference from that. So there's nothing in this rule that tells you to re-drop. So by default, go to rule 13-1, and you play the ball as it lies. And that is a source of confusion among players. And there is an interesting sequence of events, one winter back in the early 90s, when at the San Diego tournament, some of you may remember Payne Stewart in early hole in the final round, took relief from a cart path, but when he ultimately played the ball, his right heel was on the path. Meaning, and he was penal, and fortunately, two officials found out about this during the round. So he returned a correct scorecard, but he was in breach of the fifth item here, that he had been required to re-drop the ball because it rolled to a position where he still had interference from the obstruction from which he was taking relief. He didn't do that, so he played from a wrong place and had to add two penalty strokes to his score. And then just within a couple of weeks of that, Greg Norman was playing in a tournament in Australia. And after 36 holes, he'd had a pretty sizable lead. He started off something like 66-66 and had a four or five shot lead after two rounds. But then all of a sudden, he was disqualified. And what had happened is that during the first or second round, there was a hole with a lateral water hazard on the left, and he had hooked his tee shot into it. He went over, dropped, took relief from using two club length option. And when he dropped the ball, he was standing, to play it, he would have to stand inside the hazard. And probably because the Payne Stewart incident was still in his mind, he saw, gee, Stewart was penalized because he didn't take complete relief from that cart path. I'm standing in the hazard, so I didn't take complete relief. So what did he do? He lifted the ball and dropped it farther away from the hazard and played. So we know he was not allowed to do that, but he did it. So what rule would we apply? Well, as Bill just said, we'd apply rule 18-2 because he lifted his ball without authority under the rules and he didn't replace it, so he gets the general penalty under rule 18 of two penalty strokes. And of course, he did not add that penalty to his score. And back then, under rule 6-6D at the time, he was disqualified for that. Which raises an interesting question, how would we look at that? How would we treat the same thing today? You know, let's say if this happens during the second round, the committee becomes aware of this during the third round. What would the committee do? Yeah, yeah, exactly. The committee would say, Bill, or Greg, there's a discrepancy for your score on the sixth hole from yesterday. We saw what happened, it should have been a two-stroke penalty. Were you aware that there was a penalty for doing what you did? And and it's unlikely, it's like, oh yeah, I knew there was a penalty, but I just, I just didn't think that was appropriate. Or I didn't think, you know, I didn't think it would apply to someone like me. That, you know, but no, odds are he'd say, no, I had no idea there was a penalty. I thought I was doing the right thing, which is why I did it. So then, the committee, under current rule 6-6D, would do what for his score? Yeah, exactly. For the sixth hole on Friday, they would add the two penalty strokes under rule 18-2 that he should have added. And they'd add two more penalty strokes for failing to include that in a score for that hole. So now his score is increased by four strokes in that round. But since they've had a four-stroke lead, he's tied for the lead before he starts his third round. Which, and I think that's an example that supports the rules change for this year. It shows that's a reasonable change, because that was pretty harsh to go from a big lead after 36 holes to being disqualified.
I think it's worth noting under this rule too, that if you just see it under rule 28, under option B or C, and you drop it and the ball rolls back into an unplayable lie, that you don't get to re-drop.
Yeah, no, that's a good point to add, that with the fifth item is very specific about the rules under which you re-drop. And one of those is not the water hazard rules we just covered, and one of those is not the unplayable ball rules. Bill just said, when you take relief from unplayable, there's nothing under the unplayable ball rule that guarantees you a playable lie. And therefore, sometimes dropping the ball under unplayable ball rule involves some risk. Involves, unless you're like Ken and are pretty confident what happens with your drops, you might get a bad result. And it might be unplayable again.
And that's referenced, we have Payne Stewart issue where he did not take total relief from the situation. Payne Stewart is a completely well-known golfer and hopefully there's no rules as well as many other players. How was it determined that he had not taken relief? I mean, was it after the fact, a witness?
Oh, yeah. My understanding is this was on about the fourth hole on Sunday. And when television came on the air, they were showing some early round highlights. And I think they happened to show on the fourth hole, Payne hit his second shot well to the right, and this was his recovery. And I think at that point, someone noticed, and this is an example of television viewers actually protecting the player and keeping the player from being disqualified. And I think a television viewer noticed, called in, alerted the tour officials, because when you see him playing his pitch shot, it's clear that his right heel is on the path.
But this spectator or witness to the television is the one that saw it and called in?
That's my understanding. And tell me if you all remember this, just in the last year or two, was there something with Roy McIlroy? And I think was it a crosswalk that was going under repair? You know, where he did essentially the same thing, I think, and he was penalized.
Had he not called in?
Well, it's interesting. If he hadn't called in, if nobody called in, there's a fair chance it would have been a non-issue. But then, because it was the fourth round, fair chance it wouldn't have been caught before the close of competition, in which case he might have escaped penalty, complete penalty. But if this had happened during the first round, then by someone calling in prevented him from being disqualified.
In a case like that, you know, the Payne Stewart thing that came up before the close of the competition, after he had returned his scorecard, let's say it happened in round one and now we're in round three or four. It's pretty hard for a player to say he didn't know he was aware that he was still standing on the cart path. How would a committee handle that situation in 2016?
Well, you're right, and there'd be two questions to ask, to say, one, were you aware you were standing on the path? And you would think, and this was early 90s, so you'd think if you had steel spikes on, you'd probably have been aware of it. But, you know, if it was, if you have soft spikes on, you know, you grind so much over your shot, you might, and it's conceivable that you wouldn't notice that your right heel was on the path. It wasn't his whole foot, it was just his heel, as I recall. So I'd say, you know, were you aware you were standing on the path? And if he just said, no, I didn't, no, I wasn't on the path, then that pretty much solves it right there. But then if he says, yeah, I knew I was on the path. And then you have to say, well, did you know you were required to re-drop the ball? And and he might say, no, I called, I just had one chance to relieve and that was it. Or he might say, oh, yeah, I did, but I had a good lie and I wanted to go with it.
So he's better off, he's better off.
Well, you'd like, you know, you'd like to, you'd like to think that a player is better off by being truthful. All right, so after all those seven situations, if the ball when re-dropped rolls into any position listed above, it must be placed as near as possible to the spot where it first struck a part of the course when re-dropped. So several things here, that if you drop twice and then place, those two drops don't necessarily have to be for the same reason. You could have a case where the first drop, all lands where it's supposed to land, but then it rolls three club lengths. Now you re-drop, all lands in the prescribed area, but it now rolls closer to the hole. Now it rolls, let's say, into a nearby water hazard. Now you're going to place the ball where the ball landed on the second drop. So that's important though, on the second drop. And this is really where, you know, Ken's practicing of his drops pays off. Because if you're in a situation where it's, you can tell from the slope of the ground or what have you, that it's likely that this will happen, you want to try real hard for that second drop to land in a good area, right? To land on a nice piece of turf where you can then place the ball. But perhaps the most important thing to keep in mind with all this is that this does not mean that anytime, that in all cases, you drop twice and then place the ball, just in these circumstances. For example, in 20-2A, we saw if you drop a ball and it strikes your equipment or a person, then you have to keep dropping until you get it right. Likewise, if you drop in a wrong place, you have to keep dropping until you get it right. And funny story, back in the 1998 US Girls Junior, that was at Marion. The 16th hole there, par four, where you get your second shot across the quarry, happened to be stationed on that hole during one of the stroke play days. And a player hit her tee shot through the fairway and started going down into the quarry. So after all players had played, I walked down there just to start searching for your ball thing, and there was a fair chance it would be lost. And found it, and then, much to my surprise, even though there's a lot of overgrowth, there was actually some stone steps going down into the quarry. And the stone steps were immovable obstruction, so she was entitled to relief, but there was just a lot of bad stuff around her in terms of bushes and really tall grass and all that. So she gets there and I say, well, we found her ball. And believe it or not, there is an obstruction here, so you get relief. And then, but the only place where she has a chance of dropping the ball and having a reasonable lie, you know, to extricate the ball from there, was a very, very small area. So we talked about that, and then some may know, Andy, I know you know Mary B Porter King, who was a very good LPGA player once several times, went on to serve on the USGA's executive committee and on the PGA's national board, and a very, very good rules official. At the time, she was on the USGA's Girls Junior Committee, and she was the official stationed on the hole. So Mary B and I both explained to the player, you know, here's your one club, nearest point of relief, one club length area. And the player realizes that she really needs to drop in this very, very small place near where the ball lies. So she drops the ball and it lands closer to the hole than the ball's, than the nearest point of relief, and as well as the ball's nearest position. So she's just dropped in a wrong place. So we say, no, sorry, you know, it dropped in a wrong place, need to drop again. It's like, okay. So then she drops the ball again, lands closer to the hole, so it doesn't land in the prescribed area. So we say, no, dropped in a wrong place, so you need to drop again. She looks as funny, so I've dropped it twice, now I get to place it now. No, 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 because you haven't dropped it in the right place to begin with. So then, drops the ball a third time, lands closer to the hole, and she looks at us and says, look, you need to drop it right here. And at this point, she's getting a little frustrated, and it's clear, and she's starting to question. So she drops it again a fourth time, lands closer to the hole. And then, you know, Mary B says something that probably a male official couldn't have said. She said, look sweetheart, the ball needs to land right here, and points to the ground, trying to make the point. And she still doesn't get it, drops it outside the area. And now at this point, her caddy has set down the golf bag and has pulled out his rules book, because he's going to show us where it says that you drop twice and then you place it. Then eventually, she gets it right and move on. Then I go back up to where I had been on the side of the quarry to the right. And somebody standing there said that she had heard these two college coaches who were watching all this and, you know, seeing this player drop the ball five, six, seven times before placing it. And then the college coach is saying, man, those are the two dumbest rules officials in the world. And everyone knows you drop a ball twice and then place it. This is ridiculous. They don't have the slightest idea of what they're doing. But I always think of that, but that's a good example of it's not dropped twice and placed. That if, that rule 20-2C is predicated on the fact that you've dropped the ball in a correct manner and in the correct place. And then it rolls into one of these situations. And that's really, and we'll look at a decision to emphasize that point even more. But with drops, it's good to think of really two aspects of valid drop. Where the ball first strikes a part of the course, and then where the ball finishes, where it rolls to. That a valid drop has to meet both of those criteria. All right, let's see. A few notes, if a ball when dropped, re-dropped, comes to rest and subsequently moves, the ball must be played as it lies unless the provisions of another rule apply. Now, I forget if they still show it, but they used to in the PGA-USGA class where Thomas Levey was taking relief from the lateral water hazard right near a green. And he dropped the ball, I think, and twice it rolled back into the lateral water hazard. And then he placed the ball. Or maybe just dropped it, then he had to re-drop it and was at rest. And then he went to get a club, and then the ball rolled into the hazard. So then, what do you have to do? Well, going to this, he has to then either play from the hazard or for an additional penalty stroke, take relief again from the lateral water hazard, which is what he did. If a ball to be re-dropped or placed is not immediately recoverable, for example, it's rolled into the water, another ball may be substituted. All right, so that is all dropping and re-dropping. Now, 20-3, we'll talk about placing and replacing. And first, we'll talk about the distinction between the two. A ball that, replacing the ball, this is something, this is wisdom of Lou Blakie, who came up with this nice summary, that replacing means placing the original ball back on the spot. And placing deals with anything else. So placing could mean placing the original ball on a different spot, or it could mean placing a substituted ball on the original spot. So a ball to be placed under the rules must be placed by the player or his partner. And a good example of placing is what we just saw in 20-2C, that if you drop twice and then place it, that you're placing a ball on a spot that it didn't occupy before. So only the player or his partner may place it. So the player may not authorize anyone to do that. Now, a ball to be replaced under the rules, for example, a ball that's been moved by a spectator must be replaced by any one of the following. One, by the person who lifted or moved the ball, the player or the player's partner. So say, we have a situation where, let's say Arnold and I are partners, and I hit a tee shot offline, and a spectator kicks my ball after it was at rest. So we know under rule 18-1, I have to replace the ball. So in that case, who could replace the ball? I could, my partner Arnold could, or the spectator could. Because I could, I could say to the spectator, do you know exactly where the ball was? He says, yes, I know exactly where the ball was. And then, then I could say, well, since you know, why don't you go ahead and place, place the ball there? And that, that would be okay. Now, what's interesting is when you look at that, let's say, well, the putting green. And let's say Dan is caddying for Arnold and me. And then when we get up to the putting green, we know that under 20-1, that I could lift my ball, that Arnold, my partner, could lift my ball, and I could authorize Dan, our caddy, to lift the ball. Well, let's say we get up to the putting green and I lift the ball on my own. Could I authorize Dan to replace my ball, Dan the caddy? Answer is no. That 20-3A does not allow you to authorize someone else other than the person who lifted or moved it to replace the ball. The ball must be placed on the spot from which it was lifted. If the ball is placed or replaced by any other person and the error is not corrected, the player incurs a penalty, a penalty of one stroke, just as we saw for, yeah, the wrong person that dropped the ball. Now, if the ball or ball marker is accidentally moved in the process of placing or replacing the ball, replace the ball or ball marker, and there's no penalty if the movement of the ball or ball marker is directly attributable to the specific act of placing or replacing the ball or removing the ball marker. And that decision, we looked at earlier, 20-1/15 offers some guidance on that. And that decision, we looked at earlier, twenty dash one slash fifteen offers some guidance on that. All right, now twenty dash three B uh tells us what to do if we're required to replace a ball, but the lie of that ball has been altered. All right, except in a hazard. Uh, if the ball must be placed, underlined placed, in the nearest lie, most similar to the original lie, that is not more than one club length from the original lie, not near the hole and not in a hazard. All right, so let's uh look at an example to make some sense out of that. Let's say that your ball is in the fairway and uh maintenance vehicle's cutting across the fairway and runs over it and embeds your ball straight into the ground. So uh, so the ball has moved, it changed its position, even vertically. So rule eighteen dash one applies, no penalty and the ball must be replaced. But how do you replace the ball when the original lie no longer exists? Under, under this provision, what uh players do is he would place the ball at the nearest, most similar lie within one club length. And let's say if it's a uniform area of fairway, then the nearest, most similar lie is probably right next to where the ball was. And player would place the ball uh in that lie. Emphasis on the word place. Now, if this happened in the water hazard, player follow the same procedure except the ball must be placed in the water hazard. And one point to keep in mind with this is that even though the player has a club length, that that doesn't mean he's entitled to place the ball a full club length. That, for example, if his ball, if there's a lie more similar to what he had, that let's, let's say there are five, there are two lies almost identical to the one he had. One is six inches from the ball and one is twenty-four inches from the ball. Then he's required to place in lie that is six inches from the ball. That he has to place it in the nearest lie that's most similar, but he can't go beyond the one club length. Doesn't mean he's allowed to go one club length away. Uh, he still has to go to the nearest uh most similar lie. Now, in a bunker, things are going to be different. That because of the nature of the bunker and the ability to move sand around, uh, the player is actually required to recreate the lie. So let's say, uh, for example, Dan and I are playing together and uh now we both hit our balls into a bunker. We find a ball that's has a fried egg lie and you know, I look at it and I think that it's mine, I go ahead and play it out. And then uh Dan finds another ball in the bunker that is mine, so it's clear that I had played his ball. Well, uh, we know under rule fifteen that uh I'm penalized for playing a long ball, even if, even though it was from a hazard. And Dan now will, the rule says, place a ball where I played from. Now, how will he do that when now I've taken this uh big swing and blooded the original lie? Well, he will recreate the lie, which might involve breaking the area and doing best it can to recreate that fried egg uh lie and then uh place the ball in that lie. Uh, then an interesting note, and it's one that has the potential to cause some confusion and the potential to be applied more often than it should. But it applies to a very narrow and specific set of circumstances. If the original lie of a ball to be placed or replaced has been altered and, and in circle and, it is impossible to determine the spot where the ball is to be placed or replaced. Rule twenty dash three B applies if the original lie is known and rule twenty dash three C applies if the original lie is not known. And this is important, this rule twenty dash three C, we'll get to in a minute, tells us what to do when, say, with the example we talked about where hit your ball, tee shot two hundred and fifty yards down the fairway and a dog, you see a dog run out and pick up the ball and will move away. So you, we know that rule eighteen dash one requires us to replace the ball, but we don't know exactly where we're going to replace it. And rule twenty dash three C will tell us in that case to estimate where the ball was and then to drop a ball in that position. So then a question comes up as to, well, what if you have the fortunately rare circumstance where both twenty dash three B and twenty dash three C apply? And let's look at a, there are a few decisions and we'll look at one of them, twenty dash three B slash four. Uh, let's see, in stroke play, B plays A's ball, which is lying through the green, and in the process removes a divot. The original lie of A's ball was known. She knew he had a clean line in the fairway and it's been altered because of the divot taken. It is impossible to determine the exact spot where A's ball originally lay. So we know that it was, you know, say at the back edge of the divot uh hole, but you don't know exactly uh where it was. Should A proceed under rule twenty dash three B, which would have him place a ball in the nearest, most similar lie? Or should he proceed under twenty dash three C, which would have him drop a ball? So we have two rules that apply and they have different procedures. And this note really clarifies which uh rule would apply. Uh, the decision echoes what the note says. As A knew the original lie of the ball, rule twenty dash three B applies. The spot where the ball lay will need to be estimated and the ball must be placed in the nearest lie most similar. Now, uh, though, when we get to twenty dash three C, and let's look at yeah, the, the next decision. An outside agency accidentally steps on A's ball and tall grass through the green, presses it into the ground. The original lie of A's ball wasn't known. Don't know if the ball was sitting up an inch above the ground, two inches, three inches above the ground. But the lie has clearly been altered. It is impossible to determine the spot where A's ball originally lay. So under which rule should he proceed? As he did not know the original lie of the ball, rule twenty dash three C applies and the player must drop the ball as near as possible where it lay, but not in a hazard, not on a putting green. And the reason why in those circumstances, the note provides rule twenty dash three C applies is one out of necessity. And that is that if you don't know what the original lie was, then how can you place, how can you determine what a similar lie would be? That you can't. So that's why uh we say in that case that twenty dash three C uh would apply in that particular case. But again, that note applies only when both of those situations occur. So it's really just there to resolve the dispute between the two rules. Because each rule applies and the note needs to tell us which rule overrides the other. All right, now twenty dash three C, spot not determinable. Uh, we use the uh example of the dog running across the fairway two hundred and fifty yards out, picking up the ball and running away. So it's impossible to determine the spot where the ball's to be placed or replaced through the green. Ball must be dropped as near as possible to the place where it lay, but not in a hazard or on a putting green. And certainly in those cases where it lay, that would be an estimated uh point. Because if you knew for sure where the ball lay, you wouldn't have to, um, you wouldn't be dropping in the first place. And if this happens in a hazard, same procedure of dropping the hazard and the putting green, replacing. The exception to this that we covered uh the other week is when resuming play, uh, the uh ball will be placed even if uh the spot where it's be placed is not uh determinable. So for example, if you, if when play is suspended and your ball, you just leave your ball out in the fairway because you want to seek shelter immediately, come back out and the ball is gone. You don't know exactly where it was, you will still estimate where it was and place a ball on that spot. Or when you come back out the next morning and your ball marker's been moved by, say, a mower, uh, you estimate where the ball was and place it uh on that spot. All right, then rule twenty dash three D. Uh, if a ball when placed fails to come to rest on that spot, there's no penalty and ball must be replaced. If it still fails to come to rest on that spot, if after two times that doesn't work, then you start to look elsewhere. Except in a hazard, so that would include, say, on a putting green, it must be placed at the nearest spot where it can be placed at rest that is not near the hole and not in a hazard. Or if this is in a hazard, nearest place where it can be uh placed in the hazard, uh not near the hole. Now, what is interesting within the good uh application of this would be, say, let's say on a wet day, you hit a ball onto a putting green that has two levels to it and the ball embeds on the putting green on that, on the slope. So you, what's the procedure? You mark the position, the ball lifted, you're allowed to repair the ball mark, but now is the uh slope that you can't get the ball to come to rest there. So you, now you look, start to look for the nearest spot, not near the hole and not in a hazard where it can come to rest. And if that spot happens to be on the fringe of the green, is that where you go? Yes, yes, it is, that there's no guarantee that you would stay on the putting green uh in that case. Uh, if a ball when placed comes to rest on the spot and then moves, there's no penalty and the ball must be played as it lies unless the provisions of another rule apply. So let's say you do this, you place the ball, it's at rest. You return to your bag, get a club and the ball moves. Well, uh, good or bad, you have to accept that result. So if it rolls into the water hazard, then you have to deal with the water hazard. If it rolls closer to the hole, you got a good break. Okay, and that's a good question that there's not necessarily a specific time count. You know, let's say it's five seconds or ten seconds when it's at rest. And I think the, the rules or a decision used to have something, let's see if it, can't remember if it said it in a few seconds, was it twenty dash three D slash one? Yeah, and what, yeah, if you look at twenty dash three D slash one, A replaces his ball on the putting green without doing anything, it rolls into the hole. And some, sometimes you hear about people making hole and one this way. Should it be replaced or is he deemed to hold out? Answer depends on whether the ball when replaced came to rest on the spot on which it was placed before it started rolling. What's interesting with this is twenty years ago or so, Andy, this decision said something like, the answer depends as to whether the ball when replaced was at rest for a few seconds before it started moving. And they tried to get away from a few seconds. Is everyone said, well, what does a few seconds mean? They said, well, we don't know, so let's use something else. You like that, Dan? And so they tried to make it more black and white. So it's, you know, pretty much as soon as you let go of the ball, okay, is it at rest? I'd say within a second or two, um, if that, that's. Yeah, and I think that, well, I, I, the provision of this, this is in the context of twenty dash three D. So that's why it talks about placing rather than placing and replacing. That it's talking about a case where a player has gone through the motions of trying to find another place where the ball will come to rest. But, but the same principle would apply uh even as in with that decision. Just when you replace the ball in the putting green, it's at rest and then moves, you deal with it wherever it will to.
Ten seconds with the ball falling into the hole.
Uh, not as much, I'm with the ten seconds under rule sixteen dash two. That's more for just that specific set, set of facts. In part is under sixteen dash two, sometimes the ball is still slightly moving during that. So they give you a, it's a fair amount of time. So it's, I, I would say it's definitely less than ten seconds. It's just, uh, they've tried to write that decision, Andy, uh, to make it as, just as black and white as possible. That it's either at rest or it's not, with essentially hopefully no gray area. All right, then the penalty statement, penalty for breach of these three sections is the general penalty. So for example, Payne Stewart, when he failed to re-drop, uh, when he still had interference in the cart path, he incurred a two, uh, two penalty strokes for breach of rule twenty dash two C. But then let's look at the asterisk uh section of that. The player makes a stroke at a ball substituted under one of these rules. When such substitution is not permitted, he incurs the general penalty for breach of that rule, but no additional penalty under that rule. So if the player, say, under twenty dash two C substitutes, when he should have been re-dropping the same ball, and he, he encourages a general penalty, but no additional penalty. And if the player drops a ball in improper manner and plays from a wrong place, or if the ball has been put into play by a person not permitted by the rules and then played from a wrong place, see note three, uh, to rule twenty dash seven C, which we'll see later, that if you play from a wrong place, that uh no matter what else you may have done wrong, you'll just wind up with two penalty strokes in stroke play. All right, now, uh, rule twenty dash four. The player's ball has been, ball in play has been lifted, is again in play when dropped or placed. Ball that has been replaced is in play whether or not the ball marker has been removed. A substitute ball becomes the ball in play when it has been dropped or placed. Now, you notice, I think that's a repetition from a definition of ball in play. That second sentence is new for this year and Phil has pointed out that apparently we have him to thank for that, that he had suggested that to the USGA, that there's a lot of, you know, a fair amount of confusion, especially among uh top level players about that, about some, a lot of good players think as long as the ball marker's down, the ball is not in play. So, so we have Phil to thank for making all our rules books about fifteen words longer. No, but that, that's okay. No, but well, it's not, well, what was interesting about that is there's really nothing in the rules that you can point to that were as a source of that confusion. It's just, there's just some misconception, just like, um, uh, what, like, I remember growing up thinking that you could have the flagstick attended only for a putt. But obviously you have the flagstick intended for any stroke, even off the putting green. And the rule was never that way. You just wonder how certain misconceptions um get started like that. But now, uh, Phil, for all those tour players that read through the rules, now they're going to know the answer. Yeah, exactly. Well, but what is helpful and what it uh resolves is the fact that you have something to point to that I, I've probably told you all a story before back in the nineteen nineties when I was working at the USGA. Answered a phone call on a Monday afternoon and a player said, so what's the ruling if a player replaces his ball on the putting green, leaves his coin behind it, and then the wind moves the ball six inches? And I said, well, assuming that the ball was at rest after he had replaced it and the player did nothing to cause the ball to move, he would play the ball from its new location. No, no, you didn't understand. The, I said the coin was still behind the ball. I said, no, no, I understand, but that doesn't alter the fact that ball was in play as soon as the player replaced it. Like, hmm, so what would be the ruling then if the player played the ball from its, uh, if the player lifted the ball and replaced it in front of the coin? I said, well, in that case, uh, he's played from a wrong place and stroke play would incur a two-stroke penalty. Hmm. So then that was Monday, then Tuesday, person called, same voice. Asked the same questions, I give the same answers. And he says, well, well, that's what you said yesterday. I said, well, you know, rules didn't change overnight, you know? Uh, that, that is still the rule. And he's like, well, I'll tell you why I'm asking. This is J.C. Sneed and this happened at a senior tour event this weekend. And I did that and I was penalized two strokes and I didn't understand why. And, and so here's a player who really thought that as long as his coin was behind the ball, the ball is not in play. So now, thanks to Phil, that, you know, you can at least point to something specifically that says that, that the ball's still in play. And before, there was nothing you could specifically point to to answer this question because it was almost, you know, kind of backward reasoning where you say, well, where does it say that it's not in play? All right, now rule twenty dash five, which tells us how to proceed when a player elects or is required to make his next stroke from where a previous stroke was made. So more often than not, this will involve a stroke and distance situation. So more often than not, this will involve a stroke and distance situation, whether it's a lost ball or ball that's out of bounds, or when the player decides that stroke and distance is the best option for a ball in a water hazard or unplayable. And it would also apply to those rare situations where a player is required without penalty to replay a stroke, for example, when a putt is deflected by a moving animate outside agency, or say you have a local rule on effect for power lines and ball strikes a power line. If the player is to play from the tee ground, ball may be played from anywhere within the tee ground, and it may be teed, so you don't have to play from the same part of the tee ground that you played before. If this happened through the green, now, for example, player hits a second shot out of bounds, ball must be dropped. This happened in a hazard, ball must be dropped. And this happened on the putting green, ball will be placed. So for example, you know, many years ago, example of Tiger on 13 at Augusta, he putted into the creek, and he decided his best option was stroke and distance under the water hazard rule. So he placed a ball where he had just putted from. Penalty for breach of rule 20-5 is the general penalty. So an example of that would be if through the green, instead of dropping the ball, the player replaces the ball, or if he doesn't, yeah, if you example. Now, rule 20-6, a rule that's helpful for both players and for officials. A ball that is incorrectly substituted, dropped or placed in a wrong place, or otherwise not in accordance with the rules. So it could mean, for example, a player dropped in an improper manner, but not yet played, and that's the key, that the player's not yet played the ball, the ball may be lifted without penalty, and the player must then proceed correctly. So this is especially helpful for officials, where you can help players avoid penalties. Let's say, for example, you're covering the two or three hole zone, and you're sitting your card under the trees, and you see a player on the far side of the hole, let's say, drop a ball from waist high when taking relief from a lateral water hazard. You know, obviously, there is no way for you to have prevented that before he dropped the ball from waist high, because, you know, you didn't know that's what he was going to do. But what this rule allows you to do, though, in stroke play, is to go over and point out to him that he dropped in improper manner and help him correct that mistake before he plays, thereby avoiding the penalty stroke under rule 20-2A. So it's a helpful rule that, you know, for both players and officials. All right, rule 20-7, dealing with playing from a wrong place. First, we'll talk, we'll define what it means to play from a wrong place, then we'll talk about the different procedures and match play and stroke play. First, the internal definition, a player has played from a wrong place, he makes a stroke at his ball in play, one, on a part of the course where the rules do not permit a stroke to be made, or ball to be dropped or placed, or B, or two, when the rules require a dropped ball to be re-dropped or a moved ball to be replaced. So for example, instead of replacing a ball, you just played as it lies, rule 18, then you played from a wrong place. The first part, it could be something that you're expressly prohibited from playing from. For example, a decorative flower bed, if the committee has adopted a local rule requiring players to take a relief. Or it could be, say, part of the course where the rules simply don't allow you to go. For example, if you drop two club links from your nearest point of relief when taking relief from a cart path, that would be a wrong place. Yeah, and one, as the note points out to remind us, that the tee-in ground, but only when you're starting play of the hole, rule 11-4 governs. All right, now, if a player plays from a wrong place and match play, he loses the hole. See, and this is part of the beauty of match play, because look at the match play version, one line. Now, look at stroke play. We have three paragraphs and three notes. So that is part of the appeal of match play. It's nice and simple. Loss of hole, go on. But in stroke play, though, player needs to have a score for the hole, and end of the round, you need to compare scores on an equitable basis. So in stroke play, if a player plays from a wrong place, he incurs a penalty of two strokes under the applicable rule. Now, let's stop for a minute to talk about what the applicable rule means. Let's take the example of a player taking relief from a cart path. Player determines his nearest point of relief, and then he drops and plays two club links from his nearest point of relief, and the rule only allows him one club link. So he incurs two penalty strokes under the applicable rule. So what would be the applicable rule in that case? It would be 24-2. That is the immovable obstruction rule. That is a rule that tells the player, drop within one club length of the nearest point of relief. So that's the rule he breached. He did not follow rule 24-2. So one way to look at it is that this rule is really just pointing us back to rule 24-2. And the player must then play out the hole with the ball played from the wrong place without correcting the error, provided he has not committed a serious breach. Then the, so in stroke play, if you play from a wrong place, nine times out of 10, it's very straightforward. It's two penalty strokes and keep playing. So all this complication is added really just to address the situation where there may be a serious breach of playing from a wrong place. So if a competitor's become aware he's played from a wrong place and thinks he may have committed a serious breach, before playing from the next tee, he must play out the hole with a second ball played in accordance with the rules. Now, if he has played a second ball, he must report the facts to the committee, similar to playing a second ball under rule 3-3. But in this case, though, whereas under 3-3, the player could stipulate with which ball he might score, in this case, there's no announcement requirement because the committee will determine with which ball the player will score. This really depends as to simply whether a serious breach was committed. If a serious breach was involved, then the score of the second ball counts, and the competitor must add two penalty strokes to score for that ball. If the competitor has committed a serious breach and has failed to correct it, as outlined above, he is disqualified. So with that, so let's go through a few things. Let's say a player plays from a wrong place and says, geez, maybe that was a serious breach. And he plays the second ball. So he gets in, and the committee says, yes, that was a serious breach. Then he'll score with the second ball, and he'll add two penalty strokes. Now, if he gets in and the committee says, no, that was not a serious breach. Well, first, the committee needs to determine whether there's a breach at all. The committee might say, you know, you, Nini, you actually played from the right place, in which case there's no penalty. Or the committee might, is more likely, say, well, you did play from a wrong place, but it was not a serious breach, so you score with the original ball with two penalty strokes for playing from a wrong place. But if the player committed a serious breach and does not correct that mistake, he is disqualified. So another time where a player in stroke play must correct an error within a certain timeframe or be disqualified, we saw it under rule 3-2 for failure, the hole out, rule 11-4B, playing from outside the tee ground when starting the hole, and 15-3 for play of a wrong ball. Now, several, several notes. Now, first one is important. What is a serious breach? Well, a player is deemed to have committed a serious breach of playing from a wrong place if the committee considers that he has gained a significant advantage as a result of playing from a wrong place. So significant advantage could come in several shapes and forms. For example, it could, the most common one is distance, that if you hit your tee shot 250 yards and goes out of bounds, instead of going back to the tee, you instead drop where it went out of bounds, you've gained 250 yards, and that is a significant advantage, and that'd be a serious breach. But a serious breach doesn't always have to involve a significant distance. It could mean, for example, going from bushes to fairway in a span of five or 10 yards, that just by gaining that, going from an unplayable position to a playable position, that's a, could be a serious breach, even though there's, say, nominal distance involved. Can the decision be subjective in terms of? Well, what's, that's an interesting question, Ken, and you get different answers from different people about that, and which is concerning, obviously, that, that, for example, let's say, well, I'll tell you a discussion, I think, forget Dan, if you and I may have had this, then let's say you take a hole, a par four, and there's a fair creek, narrow creek, say, is wide as this table, cuts across the fairway. Player hits the, and the creek is 150 yards from the green. Player hits his tee shot into the creek, and the creek's marked yellow. Instead of dropping on the tee side of the creek, he drops on the green side of the creek. So he gains 10 yards, but now he doesn't have to hit over the creek. For a tour player, is that a significant advantage? I would say no. That going from 150 yards to 140 yards, not having to worry about this creek right in front of you, to a tour player, that's nothing, that the two-stroke penalty is sufficient. But on the other hand, if you have a 36 handicapper, now the fact that he doesn't have to hit over that creek, that could mean a lot to him. So could you get a different result? Could you say for the tour player, no, that's not a significant advantage, but for the 36 handicapper, it is? I think in an ideal world, it makes sense to me that you could have that kind of distinction. But on the other hand, it is troubling to think that these players and their abilities could wind up with very different results on that hole. Because you like, especially in stroke play, you like to think that if I do something and you do something, that we're going to get the same result under the rules. And it would be concerning if we don't.
Situation in 17th hole that you were in. The number five player on a curls team, the number five player, which I don't know at the time, but I'm called back after this girl had teed off on the evening hole. And a spectator says she hit the ball out of the green side bunker into the water hazard in front of the green. She then, she then played it like a lateral hazard. Had she played it correctly, she either would have had to go back in the bunker, or she would have had to go on the other side of the hazard, she would have been in the rough, and she would have had about a 30-yard shot over water. That's the situation, and she had already teed off on the next hole. Fortunately, her coach was Peggy Gurok, which, they're her, Girok, no, Gurok. All right, anyway, sophisticated player, good human being, great coach. We decided that we wouldn't talk to the girl until after she was done, otherwise. But my problem is that she's the number five player, and if she's got to go on the other side of that creek or go back into that bunker, to me, it was a serious breach. We didn't, we didn't end up treating it that way. And as a matter of fact, in this case, they win this tournament by 40 strokes every year, so it didn't matter what she, what happened. But I was always concerned about what was the right answer. Just the left side of the whole hazard.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, you know, and that's, that's a tough, tough question, Ken, that, and the question for those at home was a player, number five player on a high school team hits her ball from a greenside bunker into a yellow water hazard and treats it as a lateral water hazard, instead of either going back to the bunker or going to the other side of the hazard, whether that, you know, could be a serious breach. And I think there's a fair chance it is a serious breach. And my only question is, you know, you could, in some cases, make the argument that, you know, it could be a serious breach for a lot more than just a number five player. And it seems to me that, you know, the two prospects were both significantly harder than what she was.
Well, actually, in this event, doesn't matter whether she's number one or number five, you've got a few demos.
Yeah, well, and that's, and one, that's the question with, you know, my example with the creek crossing the fairway, a tour player versus 36 handicapper. Are they, what if it's one of our net partners events they're playing in or something? That, you know, you feel an obligation, you certainly want to treat all players the same, but you start to wonder, does it really make sense? And could you imagine going out and telling Rory McIlroy, sorry, you're disqualified, that was a serious breach, you're playing from a wrong place? You know, and you feel like a moron telling that to him and trying, trying to justify it to him. Well, you know, because now you don't have to worry about chunking it five yards into the creek, you know, which I'm sure you'd say was not a concern of his anyway. So, so what I'm saying is there are some people that would say, you know, some very good rules officials say, no, you treat all players the same. And for example, with a water hazard, you can never go on the other side of a greenside of a yellow water hazard, that's always a serious breach. And then, you know, there's some people like me that are, that would like to find a way to treat players a little bit differently, but with some, with a little bit of a guilty conscience.
A question for you, just hypothetical, which we hate to do this, but in Ken's example, where the player's hit into a bunker and then struck a ball back over the green into a water hazard front in the green. And let's say it's marked yellow, and the player has absolutely no idea what to do, and decide, I'm going to go back to the tee and start the whole thing over.
Yeah, okay.
Could you ever have that be a serious breach? Where the player returned? To the starting point of a hole?
Yeah, and you could have a serious breach, and probably the best example would be if we did, if we changed rules, is imagine a case where, say, whether it's in Britain or out in Bannon Dunes, where they have gorse bushes, where they have a, a player hits a ball in middle, a bunch of gorse bushes, but there's a little bit, it's very small clearing, so he finds his ball and thinks there's a chance to play it. And he plays it, but he hits it five feet, now it's truly unplayable. And then what if from that point, he then says, oh, jeez, I gotta get out of here, I'm going to go back to the tee? Could that be a serious breach? And that could well be, is if he were to proceed properly, what would he do? His best course of action may be to go two club links, two club links, two club links, two club links, and incur several penalties along the way. Now, by avoiding that, by just going back to the tee, that, that could well be a serious breach in that case. Let's say, Bill says yes.
It was.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, and so the question, it was 17 at TPC Scottsdale, the recent Waste Management Tournament, where Ricky Fowler, I didn't see it, he hit his ball over the green, tee shot over the green into the hazard. Well, if, and Bill's confronted, that's entire hazard is marked red. But, so the question is, what if it were marked yellow, what would he do? Well, his options would be stroke and distance, which would be pretty rough, stroke and distance from 300-plus yards out, or go to the other side of the pond, and now know if the course will enough know if that takes you to 18th fairway or what? Oh, 18th tee. Or I would imagine i- if for some strange reason, the tour wanted to mark it yellow, they would probably give him a dropping zone somewhere. No, well, you're, and I think, and I think, you know, Ken and Dan make a good point in that from practical perspective, when you're when you're looking at a tournament, merely what you're concerned with is you wanna make sure you treat all those players in the field the same. And it's probably, while it's not accurate, it's probably safe to kind of assume they all have, hold them up to the same standard in terms of skill. And, but what I, what I was, business, not as if in my case with the creek crossing the fairway, you're gonna have Rory McIlroy and a 36 handicap are playing in the same competition. You know, granted, some people would say, well, what about pro am's and, you know, okay, but. But, you know, so from practical perspective, treat people the same, and there is the mad, and you're absolutely right, that consistency makes things easier for everybody, as well as it's just the right thing to do, is you wanna make sure everybody's treated the same. What, I, and one point is interesting that we, I think we touched on maybe briefly last time, where skill can come up, is rule 13-2. With decision 13-2 slash 0.5, it talked about when a player is considered to have improved his line of play or area to swing or something like that. And now what the USGA has said is that in some cases, when you factor in all the other factors, if it's still a toss-up as to whether it's been an improvement, then it's okay, look at the player's skill kind of to break the tie. So for, for example, let's say a player has a a 50-yard bunker shot, and the player has raked some footprints in the sand, in the bunker, on his line of play, five yards in front of him. Now, for a tour player, it's extremely unlikely that his ball would come to rest, and let's say there's not a great lip or anything. But for a 24 handicapper, there's a fair chance he's not gonna get out of that bunker at all. And his ball could come to rest in there, and therefore be an improvement if those footprints were raked. So that could be a case where you could, based on ability, separate the two players, and maybe there is that, that, that chance or that possibility, but perhaps the key thing is treating all players in each tournament, holding them to the same standard. Does that make sense, or does that help? Yeah.
Online question that said, and hopefully this will make sense. If a spot is reachable by rule 28, but not by rule 24, can there be a serious breach if the player purports to take relief under rule 24, but plays from a spot reachable by rule 28, even though under rule 24, he has no shot for the green?
Okay, so a player is, is saying he's taking relief under rule 24, but he drops in a spot that he could have reached with one penalty stroke under rule 28, but he didn't deem the ball unplayable. Could that be a serious breach? I would be inclined not to say that's a serious breach. In part, and I think that's a fair way to look at it, and sometimes a serious breach, you know, there's several ways, granted, you know, the note says, look at whether there's a significant advantage. But also, sometimes on a more basic level, you just say, but is two penalty strokes enough for what this player's done? Then another way to look at it is say, well, gee, the player could have gotten there for just one penalty stroke in the first place, and he's getting two penalty strokes, so that seems to be fair. So I, I would say in that case that I, I would be inclined to say it's not a serious breach.
I've always been, dislike the word, the word, you feel associated with serious breach. To the point where I thought, well, could there possibly be an assessment of two additional strokes as opposed to two? Reason or rationality that you have a senior term in walk-on or something like that. People have to get hotel rooms and they have to pay in advance, you know, or something, and then they come there to get their first hole and they see improperly where they drop alongside of the hazard, something like that, and they don't correct it. I mean, all of a sudden, and all of a sudden, they turn this corner, and somebody points out, hey, I saw a foul, you know, couldn't you have taken it over here? And you ask him, and he says, yeah, I, I did this, I think, and that's a serious breach. So he's disqualified, and he has to drive home, and who's everything out like that?
Well, so, so the question is, is there a way to keep people playing and to have, not have a disqualification penalty for serious breach? And I think the concern is that it's hard, if not impossible, to quantify the advantages the player gains by playing a, by committing a serious breach. And for example, if the penalty were a total penalty of four strokes, what if you had a case where a player might just, is lying in a bush, he might say, oh, I'm gonna go up and put the ball in the lip of the hole, tap in. Then to say, he says, you know, realistically, it would take me at least six shots to get there, so I'm glad they take four. You know, you, you, you know, because if, because that's, and we laugh, but that's what. Well, no, 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 what if, what if he says, no, no, look, I normally get four penalty strokes, but that's what I'm gonna do. You know, we, you know, so you don't want a case where a player might, would be willing to accept a penalty like that. And, you know, the concern about players being disqualified on the first hole, you know, there are so many other applications, such as what if he, you know, hits, hits his tee shot on the first hole and somebody, then starts, well, hold on, let me look at that grip, well, that grip doesn't conform. You just made a stroke of a non-conforming club, you're disqualified. You know, you know, so there are other examples where, after just one shot, a player made an effort to play in a tournament, can be gone. And I think that's just kind of the nature of dis- disqualification.
The conforming grip would dissolve by things, but the stableford format alleviates some of the concern that you have there, because you disqualified for just the hole.
Yeah, that's true, yeah, yeah, stableford's a, does a very good job in terms of keeping people clean. Exactly right. All right, now let's look at note three, which is an interesting and important one. If a player incurs a penalty for playing from the wrong place. Yeah, note two's not that important. Well, it's, it's not, not that exciting, it's, it's pretty straightforward, and it's pretty dense. Note three is a little more fun. If a player incurs a penalty for making a stroke from the wrong place, there's no additional penalty for A, substituting when not permitted, B, dropping a ball when the rules required to be placed, or placing a ball when required to drop, or C, dropping a ball in an improper manner, or D, ball being put into play by a person not permitted to do so under the rules. So essentially, what this is saying is that if the player plays from the wrong place, we really aren't going to care how the ball came to be there, or which ball he's playing. First and foremost, he's playing from the wrong place, that's the priority, and we are not going to apply these other penalties. So that's a, that's a friendly, friendly provision. So let's say, for a player, to try to put it all together, if a player's taking relief from a cart path, where he's supposed to drop the original ball within a club length of his nearest point of relief, instead, he drops a different ball, he drops it over his shoulder, and he drops it three club lengths away, that he's, in stroke play, he'll still wind up with a total penalty of just two strokes. For that, but he's not gonna wind up with, whatever, five or seven or whatever it'd be. All right, now let's, now look at some decisions. Let's see, 20 slash one, club to be used in measuring. So here, when starting, taking relief, a player uses his driver to measure one club length through two club lengths, he drops. Then he wants to see, under rule 20-2C, whether he must re-drop. And the principle of this decision is an answer, the player must continue to use the club he originally used for measuring, for all measuring in a given situation. So for example, if you're using your driver to measure the two club lengths relief from the lateral water hazard, then it's a question as to whether the ball rolled more than two club lengths, you have to use the driver again to make that determination. Decision 20-1 slash 0.7, lifting ball to determine the application of a rule. This is a useful one to know, it can apply to several situations, probably the most common one is when a player lifts his ball and will see if it's embedded. And it gives the procedure the player will follow, which is very similar to the procedure under rule 5-3 of lifting the ball to see if it's unfit for play. So this is useful for officials to, where you can let the player lift his ball, provided he follows this procedure. Then let's look at, to compare and contrast, go, go back to a question I believe Ken may have asked earlier. Let's look at the pair of decisions 20-1 slash 2 and 20-1 slash 4. In a match between A and B, B, without A's authority, marked the position of and lifted A's ball on the putting green, is B subject to penalty? Yes, under 20-1, a ball may be lifted only with the authority of a player. Without that authority, B incurred a penalty stroke under rule 18-3B, he lifted his opponent's ball without authority. Now, contrast that to a fellow competitor in stroke play, where 18-4 provides for no penalty, so there's no penalty and the ball must be replaced. Let's see, another example of that is, or an example of a penalty involving lifting a ball marker is 20-1 slash 8. That there, there are several decisions that talk about ball marker, and in many cases, a ball marker is treated the same as a ball, but not in all. But it's just something to be aware of, and here's a case where a ball marker is essentially treated the same as a ball. Player mistakenly believing he's won a hole, picks up his ball marker, what is the ruling? Well, he occurs a one-stroke penalty on rule 20-1 and must replace his ball. All right, let's look at decision 20-2A slash 6. Now, there are several decisions that talk about, that raise the question as to whether a player who's required to re-drop a ball under a certain rule may change his relief option when he does so. A player deems ball unplayable and elects to proceed under rule 28C by dropping a ball within two club lengths. The dropped ball strikes the player's foot, so he has to re-drop under rule 20-2A. May he change his relief option and, for example, proceed under rule 28B as employed? Answer, no, a player may not change his relief option when re-dropping the ball under rule 20-2A. Now, let's compare that to decision 20-6 slash 2. Over on page 342. In that case, a player deems ball unplayable, he drops the ball in a wrong place and is advised of this fact. He then lifts his ball under rule 20-6 and wishes he, he'd like to proceed under option B of the unplayable ball rule. Is he allowed to do so? And the answer is yes, he may. And one way to keep it straight as to when a player may change relief options when re-dropping, is that the one time he may is this case, when he is dropped in a wrong place. That the other times when he is re-dropping the ball, for example, he's re-dropping in 20-2A or under 20-2C, he needs to stay under that same option. And the reason for the distinction is that when you drop in a wrong place, you really haven't dropped under any option. That, in some cases, you may have dropped under an option that doesn't even exist. For, for example, let's say, a player hits a ball towards a lateral water hazard, and he elects to drop the ball in the so-called line of flight that the ball took into hazard. So he drops the ball 50 yards away from the hazard on the line the ball took towards the hazard. Well, he's dropped in a wrong place, so how can you say, well, you have to proceed under 26-1B or 26-1C, when he was not trying to use either of those? And he didn't use either of those, so that's why when you drop in a wrong place, you can change your relief options. Which seems a little generous in that when you drop in a wrong place, you've really done the most wrong compared to the other situations. But you are allowed to kind of start over and change options under that rule.
Really, in other words, in other words, your ball is almost, you're dropping in a wrong place, your ball, you're not putting your ball in play under an applicable rule. In the other instance, you're putting your ball in play under an applicable rule, it just happens to strike something that requires a re-drop.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I'd hesitate a little bit to put in those terms, because there can be different variations of dropping in the wrong place. You know, there's my case where, the, my example where the player's intending to use the water hazard rule, but he's made up an option that doesn't exist. But on the other hand, you could have a case where the player is trying to drop within two club lengths, but he's trying to drop at the very edge of two club lengths, because that's, will give him the best shot, and he drops just outside it. You know, in that case, he has dropped in a wrong place, and even though he was clear he was trying to drop within two club lengths, if he then wants to go under 26-1B, he could. You know, so you could have a couple of different versions of that. All right. Now let's look at decision 20-2C slash 0.7, which is kind of an interesting one, but it establishes or confirms a significant principle. A player's ball lies behind a tree, and he wants to play a low shot with a four iron, but he has interference from a protective fence. So he determines the nearest point of relief with his four iron, and he measures the one club length area in which to drop a ball. After he drops, the ball rolls and comes to rest near the fence than the nearest point of relief. Therefore, there's still interference by the fence for the originally intended stroke with a four iron. However, ball now is such a great lie that the player could now play a pitching wedge over the tree. And now with the shorter club, the pitching wedge, he wouldn't have interference from the fence. May he play the dropped ball, or must he re-drop it? And the answer is the ball must be re-dropped because it came to rest at a point where the player still had interference from the fence for a stroke with the club used to determine the nearest point of relief. So what this confirms is that what determines whether, say, rule 20-2C applies, is your originally intended stroke. So the club be expected to use the direction of play and all of that. That determines whether you've satisfied the requirement of not having interference from, from that condition. And 0.8, I think, is the, kind of the other way, isn't it? Yeah, where the player goes from a three wood, or no, he goes from a wedge to a three wood. You know, where he determines his nearest point of relief with a wedge, because he's in thick rough. And then he drops the ball, and because he's like Ken, he's been practicing his drops, so he gets a great lie, now he can hit a three wood. So with the wedge, he would not have interference, with the three wood, with the longer shaft, he would have interference. And the answer there is that, well, it's a new situation, he has satisfied rule 24, it was for the originally intended stroke, the wedge, he doesn't have interference. But for the three wood, he could either play the ball as it lies, or he gets it all over and take relief for the three wood shot. Now, decision 20-2C slash 1 is, is a useful one to, just to look at occasionally, because it emphasizes, as we talked earlier, the two different parts of dropping. There's where the ball first strikes a part of the course, and then where the ball finishes. And how you have to get both of those aspects correct in order for it to be a valid drop. So, for example, a player taking relief from a lateral water hazard. And let's say if that player drops the ball right at the edge of the two club lengths, and the ball could roll up to two club lengths away, in terms of sideways or backwards, and without the player having to re-drop the ball, so the ball could come to rest almost four club lengths from the spot where the ball last crossed the hazard margin without requiring the player to re-drop. So that, that's an example, and you put it all together, you can wind up with some results that seem, that seem pretty strange, but when you break it down part by part, makes sense. Yeah, often popular for test questions. All right, decision 20-2C slash 3 is, involves a situation where as referee, you feel often foolish, where, let's say, it could be a player is taking relief from a lateral water hazard, and it's clear that his ball's going to roll into the hazard each time, or it Or it could be a player's taking relief from a lateral water hazard and has to drop the ball on the cart path. And you feel kind of silly requiring the player to drop his, you know, brand new ball on the cart path. And why do you have him do it? One, because the rule requires him to do it. And also, as this answer says, to drop and re-dropping are necessary to resolve any doubt as to what the ball will do. And this drop balls can do strange things. And also to establish the reference point for placing the ball if necessary under rule twenty dash two C. So a lot of times, you know, or sometimes players will ask you, why do I have to do this? And it's helpful to be able to explain, explain why. All right, let's look at decision twenty dash four slash two, which establishes a helpful principle. Now this involves the practice you see mainly at the professional level, where say often a player will lift his ball from the putting green, give it to his caddy for the caddy to clean. Then the player walks to the opposite side of the hole, survey his putt. And the caddy sometimes will place the ball an inch or two behind, i.e. away from the hole, the ball marker. It's best until it's mainly just so the player can see where his ball is from the other side of the hole. So the question is, when the caddy does this, is the ball in play? And the key is the first sentence of the answer. Answer depends on whether the caddy intended to put the ball into play when he placed it. So if the caddy did not place the ball with that intention, uh, for example, if he's just putting it down there to serve as a reference point, then it's not in play. So what would that mean if the player then just blanked and went up and played it? He's, he's played a wrong ball. But if the caddy intended to put the ball into play, then it is in play, which means that if, say, the caddy then drops the towel on the ball and the ball moves, player incurs one penalty stroke under rule eighteen dash two for that. And if the player were to then play the ball, then he would be playing from the wrong place. Uh, well, it, it, well, it's interesting, it depends on the intention that it is in play, but it's been placed in play by an incorrect person. Yeah, so.
Which is what it does, but it doesn't, it's not super clear.
Oh.
It seems to me that doesn't really matter what the caddy's intention was because he's not entitled to put it down anyway.
Well, well, where it.
As long as he doesn't play it, I mean.
Well, you're right, he's not entitled to put it down, but it's still, you could have a case where, let's say, to make it extreme, then let's say on the putting green, let's say, Ken, I'm your caddy. And you lift your ball, you give it to me. Let's say you make an extreme, extreme case, you tell me, John, replace my ball for me. And I replace it, even though I'm not allowed to. Uh, and then you putt from there. So you played from the right place, but the wrong person placed, replaced it. So there'd be a penalty stroke for that. Uh, but, but it is, it is in play. You haven't played a wrong ball. There's our, it is how this came up. There was an incident in Nationwide, or back then called a Nationwide tour. Now the web.com event tour where, uh, I think they were using local rule for preferred lies. And the player lifted his ball, gave it to his caddy to clean. And then the caddy placed it on the ground and the player played. And question, the question was, well, was that okay? Or has he played a wrong ball? And it's like, well, it depends. Did, was the caddy intending to put the ball into play? Or was he just trying to set it down while he went to get a distance or something like that? So it's important to know that intention does matter in that case. All right, decision twenty dash six slash three is a useful one to know because it's not, uh, always, the answer is not necessarily the most intuitive one, but it does make sense. Uh, player's ball lies on a paved cart path and taking relief, he mistakenly drops another ball. But he discovers the error before making his next stroke. So we know under rule twenty dash six that he can correct this improper substitution. Uh, so the question is, how does he go about correcting it? Does he simply swap out the balls on the ground? Or does he start again and drop the proper ball? And the answer is he would drop the proper ball because that is the moment he first did something wrong. And that improper ball left, left his hand, uh, that he would return to that point. All right, decision twenty dash seven slash two is another one that touches on decision thirty-four dash three slash six about how to treat a player who's proceeded under an inapplicable rule. Because as we've said in stroke play, the committee needs to figure out the player's score for the hole. In this case, let's see what happens. On the seventh hole, a player deems his ball unplayable in a water hazard. And thinking that rule twenty-eight B or C applies, drops the ball in the water hazard and plays it. What's the ruling? Well, as we'll see under rule twenty-eight, that a water hazard is the one place you may not deem the ball unplayable. So the player's proceeding under a rule that does not apply. So it's pretty straightforward in our, with our friend match play that the player is going to lose the hole. On stroke play, uh, the committee needs to figure out the player's score for the hole. Uh, and to do that, what the committee will do is they're going to say, well, rule twenty-eight could not have applied. But on the other, but is there another rule that could have applied? The answer is yes, the water hazard rule, rule twenty-six could have applied. So we're going to compare the player's actions against rule twenty-six to determine, uh, his score for the hole. So then comparing what he did to what he was allowed to do under rule twenty-six, uh, we come to the following result. If a serious breach of the water hazard rule was not involved, then the player would incur a total penalty of three strokes. One penalty stroke for taking relief and two additional penalty strokes for playing from a wrong place under the water hazard rule. But if a serious breach of rule twenty-six was involved, now the player must correct that mistake. Will be disqualified. All right, and one decision that's new for this year that it actually involves a change to a position to a decision that was around for about ten years or so, uh, but it's since been removed. And that is what to do if a player enters a lateral water hazard that's been marked as an environmentally sensitive area. So by local rule, play is not permitted from there. And let's say he plays, uh, two strokes from that hazard. Uh, does he receive two penalty strokes or, uh, or in addition to the one, where you, does he receive two penalty strokes or does he receive four penalty strokes? And the answer is there'd be four penalty strokes because each stroke he makes, he is playing from a wrong place. He's not allowed to play from the ESA. That, uh, in the same principle would apply to other situations that some of you may remember there had been a decision under rule twenty-five about a player who makes multiple strokes on a wrong putting green. And the answer used to be a single penalty. Uh, and now there'd be multiple penalties. And, you know, obviously one question is how in the world do you make multiple strokes on a wrong putting green? And, and I think how that happens is if you just play the wrong hole. Uh, if you, if you get out there, you hit your tee shot and you play towards the wrong green, thinking that it's your green, you hit your ball onto it and then you two putt. That, uh, in addition to counting all those strokes, you're going to add, or you're going to add two penalty strokes for each putt you made on that wrong putting green. Well, yeah, true. Okay, yeah. Yeah, got a stroke from wrong putting green goes out of bounds and then dutifully proceed under stroking distance, take another debit out of the wrong putting green. Well, I, I think it is squared with one dash four slash twelve and that, that, or, or the decision, one of the decisions immunity after it essentially establishes the principle that a stroke resets the penalty clock. That whenever you make a stroke, the penalty clock starts back up. And if you do something wrong again, you're penalized again. Uh, decision twenty dash seven slash two is a good one because one, it appeared on rules quizzes with some frequency. Two, it's fairly realistic that it could happen at an event, whether, you know, Hail Irwin did it as senior tour event or that could well happen at a WSGA event. Twenty dash seven C slash two on page three forty-seven. In stroke play, or basically, uh, decision covers a case where let's say Bill and I are fellow competitors and we hit our balls under the putting green near each other. We both marked the position of and lifted our balls. When it's my turn to putt by mistake, I put my ball down in front of Bill's ball marker and putt. So the first question is, have I played a wrong ball or have I played from a wrong place? And the answer is I've played from the wrong place because I intended to put the ball into play. But I just put it into play at a wrong place. So I've played from a wrong place. Our ball markers are within a foot of each other. So it's not a serious breach. So at that point, what should I do? I should continue hole out and add two penalty strokes to my score for the hole. Instead, what do I do? Not knowing, you know, with the saying, the rule knowledge is a dangerous thing. I lift that ball and, uh, without marking its position, I go back, will, uh, put it in front of my ball marker and play from there. Now what have I done? I've played from a wrong place again. Rules required me to play from wherever that first putt finished up. Instead, I played from somewhere else. So I've played from a wrong place again. So I would for a total penalty of four strokes. Uh, two penalty strokes for each time I played from the wrong place. Assault on the wound decision? A little bit. All right, so that is it for the rule twenty decisions. And you can say that's it for today, which is pretty interesting when you think about it. So we spent four hours covering three rules today. Uh, so that tells you something about the rules we covered, especially with rule twenty that we covered. Jeez, we spent more than two hours covering rule twenty, didn't we? Well, with P, yeah, with the PGA seminar, we won't go through all the decisions, but. I'm not sure I could do that if I tried. So, so next time we'll get off to a faster start. Twenty-one through twenty-three are pretty quick rules. Then we'll get through probably at least twenty-four and twenty-five, maybe twenty-six, and then we'll finish up the week after. So, so again, just a reminder that next week we're meeting on Thursday and not on Friday. Yeah, yeah, so next two are on Thursday.
And we'll send out a email to that effect.
I'm bringing over my doctor saying in Florida.
Need us to join you, just let us know. Yeah, so I think we finish on this, on Thursday and the P, and the USGA PGA starts on Monday or Sunday.